You gotta unmute.
That might be a little bit better. Alright, sorry, my microphone was not on my head. Alright, once again, this is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bibb County Public Affairs. We are back for part two of our commission meeting. We are getting our live feed up and running on our website. That's maconbib.us. So you can let people know if they do not have Facebook, they can still watch this meeting. That's www.maconbib.us. Alright, I've just sent that. So our great web team is working on getting this live stream up and running at maconbib.us. We'll be getting started here in just a couple of minutes. Thank you for bearing with us. Hey, everyone, this is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bibb Public Affairs again. Just checking our audio on the website. It is up, so Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready, we're ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I apologize for the delay. But we're out of executive session now and continuing with our pre-commission meeting. And we're about 25 minutes late already to start the regular commission meeting at 6:00. But we do have some additional business to conclude in pre-commission. We have three items or four items, I think, of new business. The first is a resolution. And Madam Clerk, I don't know if you have got the caption for this to pull up. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a construction contract with Warren Associates, Incorporated, for Phase Two of the Lake Toposofki renovation project in the amount of $1,134,500 to be paid from 2018 Splot Proceeds Recreation Lake Toposofki property line item. This, I understand, is the contract that was bid out. And I think we have approved the money and the timeline. But now, this is the contract with Warren Associates, which is the final act that we need to approve so that Warren can get started on the improvements at Lake Toposofki. Michael, can you? Oh, excellent, Clay. Thank you for waiting in the waiting room. Let me call on you and see if I'm correct in what I just said.
That is correct, Mayor. This is the project was put out for bid. We had five bidders. Warren and Associates was the low bid. We have approved the money. It has been set, y'all have appropriated the money and done the timeline adjustment as we needed. And so this is the contract for Phase Two of the Lake Toposofki improvements.
And can you tell us briefly what the Phase Two? Is this the one that's got the bathrooms and the this and the that and the other?
Yes, sir.
Gatehouses, et cetera?
The gatehouses are in the existing. When this is a renovation, the existing pavilion at Claystone, a total renovation enclosure, partial enclosure of the pavilion at Sandy Beach. It is the purchase of three, four prefabbed pavilions for Sandy Beach. It will include two pickleball courts. It will include the renovations of seven additional bathrooms and allow us to do some other minor things around some of the picnic areas and things like that.
Dr. Moffett, I understand you want to chime in as well?
You're muted.
You gotta unmute yourself, Dr. Moffett, before you start talking.
Dr. Moffett, your microphone appears to be unmuted, but we still cannot hear you. I'm not sure why that might be. Sarah, are you able to go in and check on his microphone real quick? Thank you. We're gonna send Sarah from the IT department in to speak with you, Mr. Moffett.
In the meantime, let's get back. Any commissioner have a question of Clay Murphy? So that we don't get out on the floor later tonight and talk about this and not have an answer to a question and stumble. This is the contract with Warren Associate for Phase Two at Lake Toposofki. If not, can I get a motion to approve this? So it'll be approved by the committee of the whole?
So moved.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Jones to approve the contract. Further discussion?
Is this complete plans or is there still more?
Clay, is there Phase Three? We have not designed a Phase Three. There are still some additional monies there. Some of that money will go towards the work that needs to happen on the dam at Lake Toposofki. But this completes probably 95% of what we had planned for Lake Toposofki.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the resolution, 75% aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, and that'll be on the agenda for tonight's main meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, wasn't Clay supposed to tell us something about Matty Hubbard Jones? Wasn't he the one that?
Yes, ma'am.
I hate to wait till the end of the year. We're approving these different things, and I certainly hope that he can tell us that Matty Hubbard Jones. I'm sure Commissioner Bibb would be real happy to hear too that Matty Hubbard Jones is ready to roll.
Commissioner, if I may, Mayor, Matty Hubbard is out for bid. It was put out for bid about 10 days ago. We have, because it's a public works project, it has to be put out for bid for 30 days because of the holidays. We felt it imperative that we give the contractors an opportunity. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, these bids are due back the end of January.
So there's your answer on Matty Hubbard Jones. Can I move on now to the next item on the agenda? Which is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an independent contract agreement with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in the amount of $2,836,601.57 for deep patch asphalt resurfacing projects to be paid for from the Lamig GDOT grant funds for roadwork line item, 2018 Splot funds, roadwork property line item. This, I understand, is the Lamig grant that we use every year and the roads that are identified by need. And this is the contract with CW Matthews who bid on it to do that work. Here's the list of streets, I believe. Michael, anything you need to add to this? In a way of an explanation?
Mayor, actually, drafted that contract. Everything that you said is correct. This is improvements that are planned based on need. Engineering's gone out and taken a look at these roads. There are, I believe, three additional projects that they would like to be able to complete as well if there are any leftover funds available after the work of these primarily identified roads in need.
So as you can see, they've tried to spread it out. District One, District Four, District Five, Two, Three, Eight, Seven, Nine, and additional work. I guess these are add-on Covington Drive and Four, Clisbee Place and Five, and Mickey Street and Eight. They usually do those add-on. But this is the engineer's selection of roads that are, that need to work.
Help me out. Look, I'm gonna need, you might need to talk to engineering. So 2.8 is a good bit of money. I need an understanding on where NoJack Lane is. Whether or not that's the entire set of Monroe Street? And in terms of allocation for those three streets that are District Eight, what does that come out to for the 2.8? And I guess it'd help me if you helped me understand how y'all create or calculate need. Because again, but please tell me where NoJack Lane is. I don't know.
I'm not sure that I know. Does anybody, can you put the list of streets back up, please? What was, NoJack, N-O-J-A-C, in District Eight?
Yes.
NoJack, NoJack Lane?
That's a strange name.
It's somewhere near North O'Hara Drive.
Where?
North O'Hara.
Yes.
Tim, Blount Field, right?
Blount Field.
Is there a, is that a paved? I mean, is that just an alleyway? Is Lane on North O'Hara?
Well, see, if the engineer had got with some of us, we would know these stuff.
Right, right. I guess that kind of courtesy on this would be nice as we are. Yeah, that's just that little, that's just that little dirt street that, right there. Yeah, I know it.
Between North O'Hara and South O'Hara. So no, my understanding is that the engineering department does this based on the need and condition and tries to spread the money around. This is local maintenance and improvement grant money.
Based on the size of Trent Street and NoJack Lane, I'd assume my shares probably less than 100,000. What do we, 2.? I know it's nine districts, but I would love to know what my cash share is.
Hey, man, it might cost a dollar. You can't be too loud when you call. He gonna be done.
I mean, I'm curious. I see some major roads on some places, and I got a lane with no houses on it being paved. Yeah, if you would talk to me about this, if you'd let me know.
Well, my question, Mr. Mayor, is, can you put the list back up? Is Holt Avenue up there? That's not my district, but I know we've been hollering for Holt Avenue by Central for Elba. So is that not up there?
I don't see Holt listed.
Now, everybody's been screaming about where Central High School is, that side road there. Maybe it's been fixed, I don't know. I've heard so many folks talk about it.
It has.
So now, that's just really amazing when we just, you know. That's the thing about commissioners, that we're right here to say, hey, this is what we need to improve on our road. This is what people have called us about. But you take the liberty to come up with a list and drive around yourself and assume this what we want. Nah, folks still gonna call us by Holt Avenue. But we're bringing it forward what we're getting done.
Going forward, let me make this recommendation to you. That any commissioner that has a road or complaint that needs to be inspected, they certainly ought to submit something in writing to the county manager. The county manager will, in course, bring it to the attention of the county engineer, who'll go out and look at it and inspect it and make a report. This is basically what is happening now. But the question before us, the question before us is, what do you want to do about this? And Clay, can you tell us anything at all about the time sensitivity of this contract? Seeing as how the next business meeting is probably gonna be somewhere around the middle part of January would be my.
So is this list created based upon complaints? Or is it based upon engineering department doing some type of data-driven statistical analysis of the quality of our roads?
Commissioner, if I may, I know that in the last two years, we hired a company to come down and do a survey of every road in the county.
Right.
Based on cracks, holes, all those types of things. And I am assuming, and I can't, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm assuming that this list is partially driven by that list that was comprised as well as the engineers actually going out there and physically looking at those roads. And the L-Meg contract, we try to get done this time of year, every year, for the next calendar year.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, we don't, we don't need to delay. We need to go ahead and approve, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second by Allen, a motion by Jones. Further discussion, all in favor of the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I know you're trying to get through some stuff. But we've said this over and over and over that the commissioners representing these individual districts need to have more input. We have turned in streets for years and years and years. And then you end up with the list, and none of the streets that you've turned in are on the list. Now, this time, I think for the last five or six years, even though it's not in my district, I think everybody realizes Clisbee Place that goes down between Central High School off of Bible, that that is a horrible street and should have been done years ago. It's finally on this list. And that's been, I know I've mentioned it, at least five years in a row. And so that is, to me, that is not a good way of getting streets on these lists. The commissioners need to be more involved. And I think that our last discussion, we said we would be more involved, but I don't see that. And I think there's a disparity too in which streets go on there because some of the streets on there have been resurfaced before. You remember, I've been here about 30 years, and I've seen some of these streets several times when there are other streets that have not been on there one time and need to be. So I just think in the future with the new administration, this take, we need to take a closer look at this list, and our own input needs to be a part of the decisions on this, but it's not now. So I really, I really don't want to vote on it, but I'm told that this is.
It is time sensitive, but if you scratch it out, you gotta go back. Basically, I think, and Clay can tell us if we don't, you go back, start out and bid it again.
Well, anyway, I just think for the future, we need to do that.
Alright, and you got a motion by Jones, second by Allen to approve the resolution with CW Matthews. So this list of streets, is there further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, 75% aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
You got two noes, is that right? I heard Watkins.
No.
No.
Yeah, let me hear, let me, let me, let me hear the noes, please.
No.
No. No.
Lucas Tillman?
No.
Oh, God.
So four, right?
Four to four.
Alright, well, that means I get to vote. So I vote aye. So the five to four, it's on the floor for tonight's vote. It's moving out of committee of the whole. Next is, Item C is an ordinance to authorize the appropriation of up to $221,848 from the 2020 Center for Tech and Civic Life Election Grant Fund for the purpose of providing additional pay to certain election workers. That is time sensitive also. Understand, they need, right, got a motion by Lucas. Is there a second?
Second.
By Schlesinger. Further discussion? I know there's gonna be discussion on the floor, but can I? Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, 75% aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
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 Got three, three noes, five, so it's five to three, is that right? Five to three, so it's approved and will be on the agenda for tonight. And then we got Item D, which is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an anticipated emergency management performance grant, performance partnership award in the amount of $50,000 with a required local match of $50,000, which will be provided by in-kind services. This is something that Spencer needs for us to move on. He's gotten this award in the past and anticipates getting it again, but they have to submit an application for it by the end of the year, I think. Spencer, are you still here? And can you add anything to that or Dr. Moffett?
Yes, sir, I'm here, Mr. Mayor. It's exactly, this is a time-sensitive fiscal year grant. And with the delay, and not delay, but the delay in the commission meeting between now and when we have our first regularly scheduled commission meeting later in January will put us at an opportune time to expend this money. This local match is being matched by funds that we've already allocated through general, through general fund. And so this is a grant that we've received every year and I have every anticipation from the state that we will receive this grant. It's just the timing with the end of the year and the commission just does not work well to get this approved in time.
Who wants to help Spencer out and give me a motion?
Those not permitted.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Jones, all in favor of.
Question, my question. Are you, do you have any grants that allow hazard pay?
No, ma'am. This grant is that we're receiving here is specifically for emergency management services and emergency management equipment and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, got a motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, 75% aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, that'll be on the final agenda, or the agenda for final action later this evening. The final item on our pre-commission agenda is a, an amendment to the resolution transferring parcels of land to the Department of the Interior. I'm gonna ask Michael if he can't tell us exactly what happened, but we found out that one or two parcels that we intended to include were not included in the description previously. So this is making that amendment and also including the road rights away within the Oak Muggie Mounds boundary line that we're beating over to the Department of the Interior. Michael?
That's correct, Mayor. This is, this is the same resolution that was presented to the commission and committees last week, but we noticed there was a scrivener's error that not all of the properties that needed to be included were included on here. And so specifically, this adds, this is the area at the corner of Fletcher Street and Dunlap Street, and then here's Plum Tree Street here. So all the yellow house, all the yellow properties are Macon Bibb County properties that we're giving to the National Park Service. This revision also removes the blue shaded portions of the road from the municipal road system. And so we can give the land that the road is on so that, you know, we don't have a gap in the property that the, that the National Park Service has. And so that's, that's the main correction, is just making sure that we're conveying the road property as well. And then this is the survey where the sheriff's shooting range is. It's the sheriff's shooting range. And our engineering department divided that beyond, there's a power line easement at the back end of the shooting range and divided that into two tracks. So we'll be donating everything that's behind this power line easement, but the 87 acres or so that's on the north side of the power line easement, the sheriff will retain to give plenty of buffer for, you know, any bullets coming out of the chute.
Good. So this, just a clarification of our intent. Be sure we include road rights away, it's off the Clinton Street and all of the necessary parcels. Is there further discussion about this clarification? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the amendment?
Denied.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Allen. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, 75% aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Alright, the amendment's adopted. Believe it or not, y'all, it's only 45 minutes late, but without objection, let me adjourn this pre-commission meeting and at the same time convene our regular commission.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just need to test Dr. Moffett's mic real quick. Dr. Moffett, can you say something real quick?
Test.
Okay, we got you. Thank you, thank you both very much. We were trying to fix that.
Good, good. Glad we got it fixed, so Dr. Moffett can chime in for us. So with apologies to everybody that's listening and wondering why we're 45 minutes late starting our regular commission, I can only say that it's just the last commission meeting of the year, and we had a lot of unfinished business and everybody had something they wanted to say. But that having been said, let me call to order the regular commission meeting for December the 15th of 2020 and say, Lord, help us. We need a prayer to begin this meeting, and Rabbi Schlesinger has agreed to lead us in prayer. Rabbi Schlesinger, can I call on you at this point to give us an opening invocation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our God and Creator, we thank you for your many blessings, for life and health, for work and rest, for home and love and friendship, and the opportunity that you have given us to serve this county and its citizens. At this sacred season of our calendar years, our fervent prayer is for peace on earth and goodwill to all men and women. So we ask you tonight to help us. Help us to teach all who dwell on earth the truth of all truths. And that is that we have come into this world not for strife and discord, not for hatred and envy, and certainly not for rivalry and bloodshed. Rather, we have come into this world to know and understand you. So we ask that you help us to strengthen the bonds of friendship among the inhabitants of our county, our state, our country, and all lands. And may the love of your name hallow every home and every heart. For blessed are you, eternal God, the source of peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi Schlesinger. Next item on our agenda, approval of the minutes and the minutes of our pre-commission meeting of December the 1st and the regular commission meeting of December the 1st have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections that anybody noted that needs to be made? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Amen.
By Wynn, and second by Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, 75% aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda, reports from outstanding committees. Operations and Finance is the first committee, and I'll call on Chairman Watkins to give us that report. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Operations and Finance Committee met on December 8th and had a brief meeting. No action items were taken, but we did have a report from our finance manager on our monthly financials.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you very much, Chairman Watkins. Economic and Community Development Committee, I think, met. Chairman Lucas, can I call on you for that report?
Yes, thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on December 8th, 2020 and took the following actions. The committee approved the following. Establishing a bicentennial celebration committee pursuant to Section 11B10 of the Macon Bibb County Charter, and a loan through the Economic and Community Development Department to Infill Housing, Inc., doing businesses in the field in the amount of $425,000 in home funds to assist with the redevelopment project of Tindall Fields II, located at 985 Plant Street. And this was approved. We also had a discussion of the pending membership or the reappointment of members to the Martin Luther King Commission. This concludes the report of the economic. Uh, this concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Uh, public safety committee, I think, did not meet, but every, every, every day i- is in, uh, in Maconville County is Public Safety Appreciation Day.
You got it right.
Very, very good. Thank, thank you, Chairman Win. Uh, finally, the facilities and engineering committee, Chairman Jones, I understand you have a report.
Yes, sir. We met as well on December the eighth, twenty twenty and took the following action. The committee approved amending chapters thirteen and fifteen of the code for the purpose of authorizing enforcement of the Abandoned Mobile Home Act of twenty nineteen. The committee approved the donation of real property to the United States Department of the Interior to be included in the Oak Muggie Mounds National Historic Park. The committee also approved the change order with Stafford Builders in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars for additional improvements to the Booker T. Washington renovation project. Those are SPOSS dollars. The committee also approved a one-time safe haven period for late payment of business license fees, which we'll vote on tonight. Committee also heard a six-month progress report from Safe Belt, who we, uh, put in, entered into contract with, uh, a year or so ago. That completes the report for facilities and engineering.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Jones. Uh, next item, uh, public, uh, comments, uh, and I understand we have several, uh, comments, uh, that, uh, are to be made at this point in time, and I'll call on Dr. Moffett, uh, for those, for those comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to say it has indeed been a, a pleasure, uh, serving with, uh, uh, these commissioners that we will be, um, honoring tonight at this last commission meeting of the year. And so with that, if you would, uh, allow us, uh, time to, um, honor our four outgoing commissioners. Um, at this time, I would like to start with, uh, Commissioner Schlesinger, uh, and a proclamation for Commission, uh, the Honorable Larry Schlesinger. Whereas the Maconville County Board of Commissioners wished to honor and pay a special tribute to the Honorable Larry Schlesinger, one of our own members, on the occasion of his retirement from the Maconville County Commission. And whereas Commissioner Larry Schlesinger served the citizens of District Two with devotion and enthusiasm, it is with great pleasure that this body wishes to add our accolades, appreciation, and sincere congratulations to our own commissioner and friend Larry Schlesinger. And whereas Commissioner Schlesinger has immersed himself deeply in our community and dedicated himself to making it a better place through racial understanding, economic opportunity, and fair treatment and justice for all through multiple leadership roles. Maconville County Commissioner, chaplain with the Maconville County Sheriff's Office, founder and director of the downtown Macon Cler- Macon Clergy Association, member of the Maconville Fire and Police Division Eight Pension Boards, Center for Racial Understanding, and the Booker T. Washington Community Center Board. And whereas Commissioner Schlesinger led with distinction at Maconville's historic Temple Beth Israel for thirteen years, dedicating himself to the teachings of Torah, Torah, and the tenets of mo- of modern Reform Judaism, performing numerous lifecycle events with both care and compassion, and devoted himself to Maconville's Jewish community and the state of Israel by serving on the board of the Jewish Federation of Middle Georgia. And whereas Commissioner Schlesinger served District Two with devotion, kindness, and compassion, serving as a valuable and dedicated member of Operation and Finance Committee, the Economic and Community Development Committee, and the Facilities Engineering Committee. Now therefore be it resolved by the Maconville County Commission assembled this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty, expresses its appreciation to Larry Schlesinger for distinguished public service, looks forward to seeing how we can, how he will continue his legacy of public service, and wishes him a long, happy, healthful, and prosperous retirement. In witness whereof, the mayor has set his hand and the clerk has attested his signature on this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty. And Commissioner Schles- yeah. Commissioner Schlesinger, we just want to say thank you. And at this time, uh, we had it scheduled, um, for you to receive some gifts. Uh, unfortunately, uh, this, uh, pre-commission went a little long, and so we will be getting those gifts to you, um, um, as soon as possible, unless they're right at your foot.
I, I've got them. They were delivered here just a few minutes ago and, and, and what you've given me, the frame piece is, uh, absolutely, uh, beautiful. I just want to thank the, uh,
Hold up the gift.
It's, it's big, it's big. Um, I just want to thank the, uh, citizens of, uh, Macon. Uh, first the city of Macon and now Maconville County for giving me the opportunity and honor to, uh, serve you in, uh, this, uh, capacity. I want to thank, uh, all of the commissioners, the city council people that I have, uh, served with. I, I used to say that I, you know, sometimes feel like I'm spending more time with you than I am with my own family. Um, and, uh, but it's been a blessing, uh, even though we don't agree on everything. And I, I also want to thank, uh, you know, Mayor Rickert. We came into, uh, office the same time thirteen years ago. And it's really been a, uh, pleasure for me to work with you because so much good has happened in this, uh, community over that time despite, you know, all of the slings and arrows that, that have come. I mean, we, the first thing we had to, uh, you know, address was the, um, economic downturn back in two thousand and eight. And, uh, it's been a roller coaster ride ever since, but the, uh, great blessing is, is that wonderful things have happened in Maconville County, wonderful things are yet to come.
Yes, sir.
And it's just been a privilege to serve with you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Um, for, for the other commissioners, because we are, uh, running for time, uh, we've asked the mayor to make sure we do a part of personal privilege for each commissioner at the end of this meeting. So, uh, if you would, I'd like to continue on. The next commissioner is the Honorable Bert Bivens the Third. Whereas the Bill County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and pay a special tribute to the Honorable Bert Bivens the Third, one of our own members, and on the occasion of his retirement from the Maconville County Commission. And whereas Commissioner Bert Bivens the Third is a quiet man whose few words resound with profound truth and sincerity that has been honored by many organizations for his impact on the civil rights movement in our community. And whereas it is a great pleasure that this body wishes to add our accolades, appreciation, and sincere congratulations to our own commissioner and friend Bert Bivens the Third. And whereas from humble beginnings in Kathleen, Georgia, Commissioner Bivens followed in the footsteps of his mother, Hester Bivens, and participated in demonstration, marches, and bus boycotts in the civil rights movement. And whereas the results of his activism allowed him to acquire the needed certification from Dudley M. Hughes Vocational School to improve his employment at Robbins Air Force Base. Not content with his education, Bert retired from the Robbins Air Force Base and returned to Fort Valley State College and graduated in nineteen ninety-four. After a rewarding career in education, Commissioner Bivens retired from the Bill County School District, and he is still committed to the struggle for justice and equality for all Americans. And whereas Commissioner Bivens served District Five in our community as a valuable and devoted member of Operation and Finance Committee on the Economic and Community Development Committee, and as our consolidated government's first mayor pro temp from January twenty fourteen until January twenty eighteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the Maconville County Commissioners assembled this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty, expresses its appreciation to Bert Bivens the Third for distinguished public service and looks forward to seeing how he will continue his legacy of public service, and wishes him a long, happy, healthful, and prosperous retirement. In witness whereof, the mayor has set his hand and the clerk has attested his signature on this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty.
All right.
Commissioner Bivens, uh, same thing. I believe you should have a token of love given to you at this time.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
They delivered the token of love, but he wouldn't answer the door. So we're gonna get it to him. We'll get it to him.
Not a problem. It's on the porch.
Look outside, Bert.
Yeah, all right. Next is the Honorable Joe Allen, my commissioner. Whereas the Maconville County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and pay a special tribute to the Honorable Joe Allen, one of our own members, and on the occasion of his retirement from the Maconville County Commission. And whereas Commissioner Joe Allen served the citizens of District Six with untiring devotion and enthusiasm. And whereas it is a great pleasure that this body wishes to add our accolades, appreciation, and sincere congratulations to our own commissioner and friend Joe Allen. And whereas Commissioner Allen began serving the citizens of Maconville County on September fifteenth, nineteen seventy-one a- as a Maconville County fireman and retired from the Maconville County Fire Department on January third, two thousand and three. And whereas Maconville County Fire Station One Ten, located at twenty-nine thirty Heath Road, is named in the honor of Commissioner Allen. And whereas Commissioner Allen is founder of Kids You Love, an organization dedicated to assuring all children have gifts during the holiday season. And whereas Commissioner Allen was instrumental in the improvements and renovations at Lake Tobisaki, bringing the state of art pavilion at Claystone Park, helping improving camping facilities, and is an enthusiastic supporter of Sandy Beach Water Park. And whereas Commissioner Allen served District Six with devotion as a valuable member of Operation and Finance, Public Safety, and Facilities and Engineering Committees. And he was the sponsor of many initiatives and groups to help the public and employees, including the Healthcare Advisory Committee. Now therefore be it resolved by the Maconville County Commissioners assembled this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty, expresses its appreciation to Joe Allen for distinguished public service, looks forward to seeing how he will continue his legacy of public service, and wishing him a long, happy, healthful, and prosperous retirement. In witness whereof, whereas the mayor has set his hand and the clerk has attested his signature on this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty. Commissioner Allen, you should be receiving some tokens of love.
Wow. Oh, who?
Who's that young man there?
No Janice Sniker for, from a frame.
Yeah. Um, unfortunately, Commissioner Shepherd cannot be with us tonight, but he also will be receiving his tokens of love. I believe he is watching. He could not participate. So, uh, Commissioner, uh, Scotty Shepherd, um, proclamation reads: Whereas the Maconville County Commissioners wished to honor and pay special tribute to the Honorable W. F. Scotty Shepherd, one of our own members, on the occasion of his retirement from the Maconville County Commission. And whereas Commissioner Scotty Shepherd served the citizens of District Seven with integrity and dedication. And whereas it would great, it is with great pleasure that this body wishes to add accolades, appreciation, and sincere congratulations to our own commissioner and friend W. F. Scotty Shepherd. And whereas Commissioner Shepherd served as a member of the Bill County Sheriff's Office for thirty-one years, from November first, nineteen seventy, until his retirement as a major on July one, two thousand and one. And whereas the citizens owe Commissioner Scotty Shepherd a debt of gratitude for his fight against crime and the preservation of life. And whereas Commissioner Shepherd served as a valuable member of the Operation and Finance, the Economic Development Committee, and is chairman of the Public Safety Committee. Now therefore be it resolved by the Maconville County Commissioners assembled on this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty, expresses its appreciation to Scotty Shepherd for distinguished public service and regrets that the public will no longer be the beneficiary of his service, but wishes him a long period of happy, healthful, and a prosperous retirement. In witness whereof, the mayor has set his hand and the clerk has attested her signature on this fifteenth day of December. Again, thank you, Commissioner Shepherd, for all that you've done and please, and, and look forward, uh, watching you in your retirement. Uh, at this time, at this time, um, as a member of the commission, we have one other member that, uh, will be retired from the commissioner, from the commission. Uh, at this time, Rachel, will you set everybody's mic to mute in the gallery and, um, you have the ball, Rachel?
All right, everyone will stand by.
Mayor passed away at walking the town. And he does not ask you to do something he's done last week. I appreciate that, ma'am. His work, if he sees, uh, that one person's development, he doesn't want to do something. At this given time, that we were beginning.
Can you hear it, Rachel?
Can y'all hear that now?
No.
Yeah, no, I am.
Mayor's legacy will be one of oversight and vision. I think that he really saw what future mayors of Macon will need to build upon, and that's a great thing to be truly wish. Mayor Richard, he did consolidation and the spirit he brought. He needed someone that will have interest in history, in current conditions of the city and county, and was able to blend those things together as well as take us to the next level. I think he did it for his team by consolidating the state and the city that has its actual deal.
I think one of the first things we had to do was work on the service delivery strategy. We did leave the land that we had to build the foundation to get rid of the taxation also meant easier in those buildings, rebuilding that area, with the derrick and parading to take chances to build people's lives. They had to do the service maintenance, and sometimes he found perfect. He had confidence and abilities to do what he thought he could. But all of the staff around collaboration, working, you know, to go through and that's working. And I mean, I don't think I've seen anybody who gracefully do that, and he's not a great shooter. No matter where he is, or not, he will go a long way to accomplish that. Somebody that's tired of doing people and be that much in. Maybe it's a great place to create. His legacy is, after what Bert was saying, leads to some kind of positive development. Didn't bear to be that, that he's a fine person.
I've known Moffett for over, plus thirty years. We're a fellow mayor. Watched him day by day, the prime of his legal career, to uncover what a servant mayor, grateful. Always felt our insurance for community was the higher calling. And I think that would be his legacy for consolidation, for inclusion, for fracturing along median, basically fracturing with. I think those things certainly stood with citizens. But I think it's so much better now, we're able to instigate before you, I've always defended our people. I cannot think of anybody who can do this. We're able to instigate before we have borders to defend that market. I cannot think of anybody who has embodied in their political career the virtues of service leadership, of unity with the self-sacrifice. He embodies that. Good, better than me, my daughter. That is what I admire back in the days. Can't think of any splendid example of a public service.
Well, I've seen a lot of changes in our community since Mayor Rick has been in office. People have a renewed, bigger confidence in our community as a result of reactions to Mayor Rick's advice. I can certainly speak from the bottom of my heart inside, consolidation is broad and efficiency. It has resulted in more development, more cohesiveness in our community, and Mayor Rick has played a crucial role in all of that during his tenure. I know we have a new mayor coming in and the foundation has been laid by Mayor Rick and others will give them the springboard with which to do great things for a consolidated government and our community. Mayor Rick is almost evangelical in his zeal for our community and the things that he has advocated for our community and the things that he has done for Macon-Bibb. It just shows that he loves this community and has a passion for it. Even though he's not mayor anymore, he's still a citizen here and we'd be expecting him to be involved in some work.
Mayor Rick has been a model of great leadership, really is. He's had a clear goal and vision for this community, and he's been absolutely relentless in pursuit of that vision. His relentlessness in pursuing the vision has inspired many of the rest of us. If you can get on board and work with him, we run our student body before the president during Robert's tenure as mayor. You can see signs of that growth all around the campus. I think he's played a important role in enabling that to mention the takeaways. Consolidation took place as well as passing our first slogs really enabled us to begin seizing on that vision. And now I think it's obvious to anyone who's been here a lot, but there's a renaissance taking place in Macon. And I think decisions like consolidation as well as passing the slogs have really empowered that renaissance.
I think his legacy will be one of commitment, one of love for this community. His love of service has been for the good of the people in Macon. I think he dedicated his life to service, and I think we've all benefited from that. We don't have the divisiveness anymore regarding city versus county. Right now, the conversation is how do we make the community better? And we've got a mayor that's done the hard work, the head of lifting, that is being the first mayor to do consolidated government. That's not an easy task. You know, we had an opportunity to build on what he started and to see the community continue to grow. You always have to make tough decisions, and those tough decisions are not always going to please everyone. But as long as you do what is best for the entire community, then job well done. And I think he's done that.
I actually want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Politics is an incredibly difficult job, and from the proximity of head of the mayor's office, I've gotten to see so many of the thankless tasks that he's taken on. I have never doubted for one moment when the entire time I've been the mayor, what his motivations were. And those have never been anything other than a veteran of the community. The entire community, I admire the incredible gratitude.
Mayor, you were always accessible when we called. We thank you for your service. We thank you for your leadership. And we thank you for your role as our CEO over the past thirteen years, and we wish you well.
Thank you for being a model of what a great leader is, a leader with a vision, a leader with the dogged determination to pursue that vision despite the neighbors and also the integrity to make things happen and bring us along with you.
Thank you for all the things you have done as mayor. You have made a mark on this community that will long be remembered.
Robert, I can think of nobody that I admire and glorify more than I would you. I express my personal thanks to you for making this community much better, adding the board of leadership for myself and for my family. And I wish you all the best in what I hope to be, and I know will be, a very long and active retirement. And like the world I live in and your family, I wish you well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your tenacity. Thank you for your perseverance. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for looking and taking the time to sacrifice so many years of your life for me to do, because we honestly and truly appreciate you for all of your time.
Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your constant smile and your positive attitude. I know many times you struggled and you felt the pain and felt like it was on your shoulders to make it right. There are those of us, I would think, in the whole consolidated government that appreciate your leadership. And you do a great job. Thank you for your service.
In the true spirit of Mayor Rick, I think you've done a great job. Just keep enjoying yourself and work to make yourself and your family happy every day because they have put up with you and allowed you to work for this community and do a great job. I know they think you're on some woman, but they want to be pushed home to talk on skill, and unfortunately, they didn't let you close. Oh-ho. Thank you. That's a little wonderful. I can keep up the last question. That is absolutely fantastic. Wow. Thank you all very, very much. This is superdude. Absolutely. And thank y'all for being here. I know it's been a while, but make it happen to be here to drink a lot. And I do wish, thank you, thank you, thank you. Put on the bicycle, let's go.
Well. My goodness.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentations, the proclamations. Thanks to all the four commissioners and your retirement. Thank you, sir. And at this time, we return the meeting back over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moffett. I appreciate that more than, more than you know, and I appreciate my family making the effort to keep their children up past bedtime and wait for an additional forty-five minutes before they could get into the chamber here. And I look forward to riding my bicycle on the oat muggy heritage trail, hot dog. That is absolutely wonderful. Thank you. No other public comments, I'm assuming, from the clerk. So that takes us back on to the agenda now. And we do have one item left on the consent agenda, I believe. And, and that is the new alcohol beverage license for H-two-O Enterprises LLC doing business as the Busy Corner located at eight eighty-five Martin Luther King Junior Drive. This is a change of ownership that prompts this license application. It is an existing convenience store location with fuel sales and with alcohol package sales to go at that location. It is for beer sales at, to go, package sales to go at that location. And the committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of issuing that license as requested, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it and that license is approved. The other two licenses that were on the agenda have been tabled pending further investigation. So that takes us now to old business. And the first item of old business is an amendment to the Oat Muggy Crossings tax allocation district. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
Yes, sir. A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission amending the two thousand and sixteen Oat Muggy Crossing Redevelopment Plan and the Oat Muggy Crossing Redevelopment Plan area, adopting and approving the expanded Oat Muggy Crossings redevelopment area, approving execution, I'm sorry, and delivery by the county of an amended intergovernmental agreement between the county and the Bibb County School District related to the dedication of tax increment and the expanded Oat Muggy Crossing Redevelopment Area and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is this the one that included Linwood?
Yes, it does. That's exactly right.
And what about the people who worked with Linwood? What was their conclusion about it?
Well, I don't think they have any objection, Commissioner Bevins, to the boundary line being expanded. What their reservation was and what their consideration is, is whether to, to quitclaim the cemetery to the city. That's not required for us to include it in the boundary line. This just makes it available for the expenditure of TAD funds if we reach a final agreement with them. Okay. Right. So, so this, this doesn't bind them to anything, but, but it does enable them to take advantage of the tax allocation district if they, if they choose and we, and we work out a mutually acceptable agreement.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next is the transfer of assets from the historic Riverside Cemetery, including the cemetery itself, to Macon-Bibb County for maintenance. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement relating to the transfer of assets and operation of Historic Riverside Cemetery and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement relating to the transfer of assets and operation of Historic Linwood Cemetery. The committee of the whole recommends approval. And again, Commissioner Bevins, this is our approval of it, but it's not effective until Linwood approves it. So as I understand it, they may want to make some amendments to it, but at least this is our approval of, of, of doing the same arrangement with Linwood as Riverside. But like I say, it's not effective until they agree to it. Is there further discussion?
Yes. Again, like you say, the conversation with Linwood hasn't concluded yet. And last time I heard them speak, it didn't seem like they were. It didn't sound like y'all were in the same place. I guess I was making a motion to table pending more conversation.
If you want to table it, that, that would, that would be fine. Like I say, it's not effective, Commissioner Watkins, until they agree to it or we come up with an amended version. But if you want to table it, that's a motion that's certainly appropriate at this point in time. Is there a second to that motion? I don't hear a second. So without a second, the motion to table dies. Again, this is the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement. But like I say, it's going to take Linwood's agreement to it before there's an agreement for me to sign. But the committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That got one, one no, Commissioner Watkins, but the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is item D, which is an approval of some funding for improvements to the sidewalk around the Willie Hill Annex Building. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the reappropriation of up to five hundred thousand dollars from two thousand and eighteen splot revenue calendar year two thousand and nineteen roads and bridges, Central City Commons Line item to provide funding for sidewalk improvements to portions of Cotton Avenue, First Street and Cherry Street, and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted. Next is item E, which is the appropriation of funds, splot of funds for phase two of the rehabilitation of the Robert Train Memorial Recreation Center. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the appropriation of up to one million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars from two thousand and eighteen splot proceeds, two thousand and twenty-one blight bond number two line item for additional renovations of the Robert S. Train Memorial Recreation Center and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
I'm going to vote no to this. Again, we all talk about residential blight being one of the biggest things affecting our community. We allocated funds for our splot for the purposes of dealing with residential blight. One point one million, the total sum of the twenty twenty-one allocation for blight remediation for splot funds. We're about to allocate to one project in a partnership with the University of Georgia Regent System, a well-funded organization. We've already committed more than a million dollars to this project on phase one. We're not asking them for H and them for no match, but we're committing a hundred percent of our blight plans for the whole year. This year, we only tore down eight houses as it relates to blight. I, I don't know.
Very good. Thank you very much. And the only, only thing, the only response I would have to that is that the Industrial Authority presented us with a check for pilot payment proceeds of approximately one point one million dollars. I think an excellent use of that money, which is not otherwise obligated at this point, might be for blight next year. And I think you could certainly look into that as far as appropriating that money for blight purposes next year. That'd just be my suggestion to you. Is there further discussion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I share, I share some of the thoughts with Commissioner Watkins. I think that we have not done enough with our blight removal for this past year. And to spend that much money on one project is, to me, it's concerning. I, I really like the project, but I think we are, we all know that we need to take more focus on blight in our, all of our districts because that's where we have a problem.
Right. Well, same comment then about, about other funds that are available for blight. But this would at least finish a project, project that would have a lot of benefit for multiple age groups from four H to senior citizens to a lot of different purposes that the, that the extension service provides. But is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Got one no.
Yeah.
Two no, two, 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 two no's, but the ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is, is the, an ordinance to approve the code amendments to accommodate the Abandoned Mobile Home Act recently adopted by the state legislation. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend chapter thirteen and fifteen of the Macon-Bibb County Code of Ordinances for the purpose of authorizing enforcement of the Abandoned Mobile Home Act of two thousand and nineteen and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee, if I recall correctly, recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted. Next is item G, which is the donation of real property to the United States Department of the Interior. And the committee of the whole passed a, an amendment to that. And the committee of the whole adopted that, that amendment. So this would be for the, the resolution, and I'll ask the clerk to read it by caption. And Michael, do I need to read the caption of the amended version?
They're the same, Mayor.
They're the same.
They're the same. Okay. So the caption is the same even though the, the amendment clarifies the property to be conveyed. So the clerk will read by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the donation of real property to the United States Department of the Interior to be included within the Oat Muggy Mountains National Historic Park and for other purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. The committee of the whole recommends approval as amended. Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution as amended is adopted. Next is item H, which is a resolution to approve payments for the Booker T. Washington Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute change order numbers 001 through 007 to construction contract C-20-0023 between Macon-Bibb County and Stafford Builders and Consultants Incorporated in the total amount of $242,223.66 for additional improvements for the Booker T. Washington renovation project with $240,000 to be paid from 2015 Blight Bond Funds, Booker T. Washington Line item, and the remaining amount to be funded by the 2018 Splotch Funds, Industrial and Urban Development Booker T. Washington Line item, and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. Booker T. Washington Community Center has a lot of, holds a lot of good memories for an awful lot of Macon's citizens, especially black citizens, because in years past, that was the only place that many of our youth, that was the only place they had to go. And I've heard people talk about there being piano lessons, dance classes, sports activities, and special section of historical pieces of different kinds of things. And I just want to say that I've talked to a lot of people recently, and they are so happy that this commission decided to renovate Booker T. Washington Center, because it brings back such wonderful memories for them, and their hope is they'll bring good memories and good services to their children or grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Let me also make an announcement here that we have scheduled a walkthrough for commission on Monday, the 21st, at 2:00 PM at the Booker T. Washington. So if anybody wants to join us, we're going to kind of have just a little walkthrough to kind of see where it is. It's 95, 98% complete now, but they're sitting the ribbon cutting on it, but it's a walkthrough. So if anybody wants to join us, any commissioner who wants to, or commissioner-elect wants to join us, Monday, the 21st, at 2:00 there on Monroe Street.
I can't wait to see the improvements over what we saw.
Whoa.
Can't wait.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a one-time safe haven for business license fees, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to provide a one-time safe haven period for the late payment of business license fees and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next, item J is an ordinance to establish a bicentennial celebration committee, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to establish a bicentennial celebration committee pursuant to Section 11B10 of the Macon-Bibb County Charter and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is item K, which is a loan for the Economic Community Development Authority to infill housing for Tyndale Fields II, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to offer a loan through the Economic Community Development Authority to infill Housing II Incorporated, doing business as Tyndale Partners III LP, in the amount of $425,000 in home funds to assist with the redevelopment project of Tyndale Fields located at 985 Plant Street and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, I think, and Michael, you may need to correct me, do we need a motion to add these to the agenda even though they've come through the committee of the whole, or can we just move forward with them?
You can move forward, ma'am.
Okay. Then the next is a resolution to spend the Lamig money and award a contract to C.W. Matthews for resurfacing of various streets around the city, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an independent contractor agreement with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount of $2,836,601.57 for deep patch asphalt resurfacing projects to be paid from the Lamig/GDOT grant funds, roadwork line item, and 2018 splotch fund roadwork property line item, and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Tillman, I may pro temp him.
There's no West Napier in District Five that's on the list, and so that lets me know that there may be a lot of other names on that list, because I went back and looked at my old list. I think we need to table this for this reason. Dave Forson retired, I think, earlier this year, and many of us have given him a list of roads and streets. If we remember, one of the main things that we wanted was, we wanted domain thoroughfare such as, I don't know, surfers with the white stripes, because people had complained they could not see at night or when it rained, and he gave us that list, and we gave him a list, and those were corrected, and those were done. Now, the new engineer has taken over, and I think we all need to go back and revisit. And the reason why I say that is because you will approve something that you really did not approve, and so regardless of what street is on there, I think it's an opportunity for us to go back. There's no hurry. These are our streets, it's our money, for us to go back and prioritize our streets. The same way, if we don't do that, then what we're going to find ourselves doing is money that we just approved on a couple of projects such as the train station in Tyndale that was not in the splotch plans when we all went to Athens, that we are now just approving just because we want to approve them. So I would just ask us, let's go back and look at our streets and give to the new engineer that has taken over, that I have not talked with.
Can you get it?
And so I just ask y'all to do that, because I'm not sure that y'all have even talked a minute with the new engineer, and Dave Forson may have our old list of streets that nobody has presented or shared, but I you.
Is there a second to the motion to table? Got a motion and second to table, and that's a non-debatable motion? Those in favor of tabling would vote aye. Those opposed to tabling would vote no. So those in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that was three, 1, 2, 3, Watkins, Lucas, and Tillman. And if so, the motion, well, our call for the vote, those opposed, say no.
No.
Right. I think you had 3, 4, and the rest against the motion to table. That's going to be my call, if anybody wants a roll call vote to determine that, but I think you had 3, 4 of the motion to table. All right. So, okay. So you're back to the main motion now, and the committee of the whole recommends approval.
If I may.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Watkins?
Commissioner Bevins is at the floor, actually. He was trying to get in.
I'm sorry. I'm just doing the best I can. I saw Watkins, but I'll certainly, I'll certainly call on, yeah, Commissioner Bevins. Commissioner Bevins?
Yeah.
Did you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this, but I agree with Commissioner Lucas, and my feeling on this, even though I'm going to vote for it, is this list is an example of systemic disparity that goes on on a continuous basis in this community.
Commissioner Watkins, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah. So it bothers me on a couple of things. We added this agenda item in pre-commission. No discussion with other commissioners, or letting us know that y'all been working on it. And I guess partly what bothers me also about that is I don't mind if y'all were using some type of systemic or data-driven way to come up with these streets, but I'm not even seeing any equality. I'm seeing major thoroughfares in some districts, whereas I'm getting an alley that no one is using as one of my three, as one of District H three streets, and that's not helpful to me or really any part of the community when we do have major road concerns in heavily driven areas, somewhere right close to that alley that you fixing, and a little bit of coordination or communication would go a long ways to having, to doing stuff like this. This is, but so that's why I'm voting no.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Let me just add to maybe help Commissioner Tillman's concerns in that the county engineer now is Charles Brooks. I happened to talk to him today about something else, but he's been there a long time. He's the only certified engineer. He's the one Dave Forson recommended be appointed, and you did, and we voted him in. But that list has been passed on from Dave Forson to him, and this new system, which I can't recall the name of, is being finalized now whereby they would do it computer-generated, but at the same time, I hope, and I agree with others, that commissioners should have input in it, and I can't speak for other districts. I see some, a couple of mine in there that need it, and I see others in other districts that I travel on that need it as well. So I think there always are going to be one or two that we, well, we wish we'd gotten that street and maybe have to wait another year, but I think it's, I think it appears to me to be a fair and equitable distribution based on what I can tell and my knowledge of Bibb County roads.
Is there further discussion?
And I guess it's not included on the attachment, but it's not possible, we've been voted on it now with less than 24 hours notice with it, but it's not possible to get a distribution of per-street dollar breakdown?
Not tonight, I wouldn't think. I don't know of anybody that's got that information that could put it up on the screen for you right now, but certainly we could get that information. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
I think I've got three no's, Commissioner Lucas, Commissioner Watkins, and Commissioner Tillman, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So 5 to 3, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
Point of information.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we get a breakdown, because there is usually an appendix that accompanies these lists, because I've seen them in the past where there's a breakdown, and by district you have the amount of money that each one of the jobs will cost, and you also have the amount of, you know, the length of the paving and all of that. There should be a list.
Right. Dr. Moffett?
Can we just get it? It's been approved, we know, but at least we can look at it.
Correct. Dr. Moffett, can you have that information available by the time of the next commission meeting, which will be after the first of the year? He's not even gone.
Mr. Mayor.
We'll get it. We'll get it, Commissioner Lucas. We'll get that, we'll get that information. I think I've even seen a couple of worksheets. Yeah, I think I've even seen a couple of worksheets, so yeah, we'll get that information for you. We'll get that information for you. But the ayes have it, this resolution is adopted. Next is item M, and that is a contract, a resolution to the mayor to approve a construction contract with Warren Associates for Phase Two of the Lake Tobasovki. What? Okay. Dr. Moffett hadn't left the building. He signed off on it's screen, but he said he'll get it, Commissioner Lucas. He'll get it. Okay. I'll ask the clerk to read this caption, read this resolution by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to approve a construction contract with Warren Associates Incorporated for Phase Two of the Lake Tobasovki renovation project in the amount of $1,134,500 to be paid from 2018's lost proceeds, recreation, Lake Tobasovki property line item, and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Boy, that needs some work, doesn't it? Good gracious. Opposed, say no?
Gracious.
The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, we go to item N, which is the acceptance of a performance grant for the Emergency Management Agency, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of an anticipated emergency management performance grant, performance partnership award, in the amount of $50,000, with required local match of $50,000, which we provided by Incon Services and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
So what did he say he could use this grant, this money for? What was he going to use it?
Equipment was one of the things that I heard you say.
He's on the line.
Oh, Spencer, good. You can answer the question. Let me call on you.
Yes, I'm planning on using a bulk of this money to replace the tables inside the Emergency Operations Center. They're about 20 years old and falling apart to install new technology to support our computers and other electronic devices, as well as the hopeful plan for some travel for training and the new laptops, if necessary, in the Emergency Operations Center.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next to last, and I've been informed and advised that there was one that we omitted to put on the agenda even though it came through and was approved by committee, and we'll get to that momentarily, but the last one on the agenda printed is the ordinance to authorize the appropriation of money, funds out of a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life for use at the Board of Elections, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the appropriation of up to $221,848 from 2020 Center for Tech and Civic Life Elections Grant Fund for the purpose of providing additional pay to certain election workers as provided for herein and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Let me count the no's, I think would be the easiest thing. Who is a no?
No.
When? When, Jones, is there another no? When and Jones vote no, so the ayes have it, 6 to 2, and the ordinance is adopted. Next, let me get to the ordinance that was omitted from the agenda even though it came through the committee process, and I'll ask the clerk to read the caption on it, and I'm not sure, can we pull it up?
Rachel, will you pull it up? Thank you. Yeah, this is my era.
Right. I'm sorry, it was, and Michael, you may tell us, do we need to add this to the agenda at this point as being inadvertently omitted on the printed agenda? As being inadvertently omitted on the printed agenda?
Right, since it wasn't on the published agenda, it needs to be added by motion.
I'm so moved.
Got, got a, a motion by Commissioner Lucas is, uh, second to add this to the agenda for tonight. Second. Got a motion and second by Wat- by Watkins to, to, to add it to the agenda. All in favor of adding this to the agenda for action tonight, 75% aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
I think you got three no, three noes, so that'd be five, five to three is what I'm gonna say. So it's added to the agenda. Now, is there further discussion? This is, this is the ordinance that's co-sponsored by me and Commissioner Lucas uh, to take the $300,000 from the 2018 revenues for 2019 Roads and Bridges Central City Commons Line Item to provide funding for the planned improvements to the Cotton Avenue Plaza, uh, the, the First Street and Rosa Park Square and for other lawful purposes. But this is to, to take it for the Cotton Avenue Plaza. Uh, and this plus the $200,000 that's already been appropriated would establish the financial trigger uh, for the project, the Cotton Avenue Plaza. Uh, the committee of the whole, uh, heard this and recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
I'd like to, uh, Mayor.
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, uh, one of a three-part project, which is 500,000 for this and then another million and a half for the, for the roundabout at First and Poplar that's not necessary. And then, and then $3 million for the Rosa Park Square, which, which, uh, which is the third component. And I'm all for delivering funds and, and, and improving and enhancing Rosa Park Square, but not any part to the tune of $3 million when it's a small passive park. It's a good focal point and it certainly doesn't need $3 million worth of work. So that one and the unnecessary roundabout of a million and a half dollars, which is First and Poplar, and so I, I, I'll be voting no. It's not good use of taxpayers' splot dollars and they should be going toward other projects. They, they, this total of $5 million certainly won't improve the quality of life for much of anybody in Macon, but especially low income.
You, you, you make a good point, Commissioner Jones, but that, I think I need Michael to make a clarification. This resolution that we're voting on does not, uh, provide the funding for either of the other two. So you can, you can vote no on those at a, at a later time. What this does do i- is take the $300,000 and puts it toward the Cotton Avenue Plaza project uh, that's on the Macon Action Plan and, and one that's, uh, to, to provide improvements in that area only. Michael, am I correct in that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Can you share your screen and pull the appropriate language up so that people know that it's, it, this has nothing to do with Rosa Park Square and, and the roundabout other than naming them in the projects that, that were discussed. But it, it should a- a- apply the proceeds to the Cotton Avenue Plaza project.
Mr. Mayor.
Right.
Yeah, hold on, let me get Michael to confirm that.
Um, yes, sir. Uh, appropriate's up to $300,000 um, from the Central City Commons Line Item for professional services and construction services in connection with Cotton Avenue Plaza. Um, First Street Roundabout on Rosa Park Square in accordance to Resolution R 200176. And that resolution, as, as you stated, Mr. Mayor, it says that the first 500,000 goes to Cotton Avenue Plaza. Then the next, um, million and a half goes to, uh, the First Street Roundabout Project. And then the next 3 million goes to Rosa Park Square. And so this is, this takes us up to the half a million threshold, which under R 200176 is all dedicated to Cotton Avenue Plaza.
Thank you. That, that, now Commissioner Wen, I think I heard you, uh, want to be recognized.
This is, this is another ploy to use money to try to do something to Cotton Avenue Plaza. It doesn't need to be done. Don't need to spend that kind of money. The monument does not need to be moved. It was never planned to be moved. The roads and bridges, if I'm gonna say this again, over and over again, our community needs to work on roads and bridges across our community, not just in one little bitty, bitty road right there in front of Lawrence Mayor Flores. We need to use this money throughout all of our districts. This is what we need to be doing to help our community as a whole, not to do one little bitty project just to move a monument. And that's what this is all about. You know that. Everybody knows this, and I think Commissioner Bibens knows this, and he knows that we really need to work on the bridges and the roads in all of our communities and all of our districts and not use this money for one little project. I think this is a terrible use of this money. Terrible. And I will vote no.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wen. Is there, is there further discussion?
Yeah, just, just quickly.
Yes, sir.
It is amazing to hear folks say we need to work on our streets and stuff in our community, but just voted against us. And that's what we just wanted to do, uh, a few minutes ago. So my thing is, we've already voted on items such as some of the stuff supposed to happen downtown. And to just, you know, reemphasize your support or no support does not serve any of us, uh, you know, any good. So we don't always agree to support every issue. Uh, and I think we ought to leave it at, at that. If something, I've said it in the past, if something passes, it's the commission that passed. If something failed, it's the commission that didn't agree on that. And so, uh, it, it sounds good to always try to emphasize to constituents that we are wholeheartedly in support or, or against something, but, uh, let's just, you know, it's a holiday season. No need to be mad about it. Uh, let's go out on a hag. That's what I plan to do, so. Uh, I, I've been quiet tonight, but I do have a lot to say before we end. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protim. Is there further discussion, uh, on the resolution?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Bibens?
Um, I believe we voted against this last time. So let me, because I asked you about Rosa Park Square. So what we're saying now is that there is money kind of maybe associated with this that's gonna deal with Rosa Park Square. My objection in the past has been that, um, we're doing Poplar Street, which came up at the end of a long discussion on Rosa Park Square. This is another example of systemic disparity. I won't be surprised if Rosa Park Square doesn't get done. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this, but I, I have some real concerns about it and Rosa Park Square going forward. It'll be left out.
But I, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Bibens. And, and like I say, I'm glad that we were able to appropriate the $954,000 uh, from the sale of the Willie Hill Annex Building to Rosa Park Square. So you got that money tucked away and, and I, I think that's a great start, uh, on, on that project. Is there further discussion about the Cotton Avenue Plaza?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to say, um, Commissioner Bibens, I appreciate your, you know, having concerns, but I'll still wanting to support this. Um, we just lost, um, Sarah Hunt. Um, she passed away. Their services were Sunday. And, uh, she would be pleased with our actions in at least starting the projects that she supported so very much. And so I'm voting tonight to start, uh, at least the ball rolling on these projects. And hopefully one day we will be able to make those improvements in Rosa Park Square that Sarah Hunt worked on that board, uh, so hard to try and have to take place. So my vote tonight is gonna be cast, uh, in memory of, uh, the late, uh, Queen Mother Sarah Hunt, who supported these projects.
But thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Wen?
Yes, sir. I, I, I still go back and say this is a misuse of money, of funds for roads and bridges across, across our community. And I think, I think.
It's an ordinance.
I think that we need to look at what we really need to use money for in this community and not for little bitty personal projects that are not gonna matter to this community as a whole. Roads and bridges across our districts are much, much, much more needed than what we're trying to do tonight. And this project with Rosa Park Square, I agree, we need to do something to it. But this is not the money we need to use for this. We need to use, and we talked about roads and bridges and roads tonight and some of them not being on the list that need to be on there. We need to use this money for the roads and the bridges in our districts and make sure they're taken care of before we do one little bitty project down here on Macon on Cotton Avenue that's not gonna make a lot of difference to anybody as far as travel and use and things like that. It's just a ploy to get this taken care of. And I wanted to ask our attorney, where are we litigation-wise on this particular issue also?
Case was, yeah.
Can you respond to that? Yeah, go ahead.
The case was, uh, the federal claims were dismissed in federal court. Federal court, uh, sent the case back with just the state law claims. We're having a hearing on the motion to dismiss that I filed, uh, that's being scheduled, I think in January. We've contacted Judge Smith, who's got the case, and it'll be sometime in January when the hearing is scheduled.
So am I right? You can't proceed with this project until this litigation is resolved?
Well, at least, or until the judge does something with the order that's pending.
Well, that's what I'm saying, until this is resolved.
Right.
Thank you.
So if I'm missing, is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins? Commissioner Watkins, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. In, in many ways, I agree with, um, both Commissioner Wen and Commissioner Jones that a total $5 million price tag, it is expensive to move a statue. But I, I, I also think, and I can't remember who said it, but erasing or reversing Jim Crow, institutionalized racism, segregation, both on the literal and the symbolic sense are both very consuming and expensive. And I guess we see that here in the cost of what it costs to move this symbol of Confederacy. I consider the Confederacy to be a trash organization that deserves to be removed from my main street. I have no love for them and what they stand for. And with that being said, it's an expensive cost, but in that sense, it's worth it.
And a rice history.
Yep, 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 yep. Let's don't have back and forth, please, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, is, is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as a final follow-up, uh, last week, uh, I talked and met with, uh, some of the, um, white organizations that were opposed to this. Matter of fact, he told me that I'm the only commissioner who he wrote letters to that, uh, have reached out and met and talked with them. And this guy was opposing the, uh, the, the movement of the monuments and the Confederate sons supported it. And they actually support, uh, what we passed. And, uh, so this guy who wrote all of us a letter, who none of us, uh, I'm the only one that responded and called and, and met with him, uh, said he appreciated that and that the gentleman, Mr. Beal, who filed the lawsuit, the Sons of the Confederate, uh, did not join him and they were actually against what he did. They did not even approve of what he, he did. And I think the attorney may be aware of that, that they supported us, uh, voting to move the, uh, monuments to Little Park. And so the gentleman that filed the lawsuit went against the Sons of the Confederate. And so, uh, so if, if you wanna get on here and talk about it, you at least need to call the people and talk to them or respond to know what's going on because, uh, I spoke to him and it, it may be a letter still in your box that you probably hadn't opened or read, and he sent it back in July of this year. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Is, is there further discussion about the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
I think I've got three noes. Do I have three noes? Uh, I, I heard Wen and I heard, I heard Wen, I heard Jones, and I think I heard Allen.
It is.
Okay, Wen, Jones and Allen. Uh, is that all of the noes? Then five, five to three, the ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, that is the end of old business and surprise, surprise. Yes, indeed. There is no new business, there is no new business to, to be read and referred. Uh, so that takes us to, to the next item on the agenda, which is a point of personal privilege. Uh, and, and I'll just say now, I, I want everybody else to go and then I would like to have a point of personal privilege at the tail end. Uh, so Mayor Protim?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let me just say that it has truly been an honor and a pleasure to serve with each, each one of these gentlemen. And if, uh, and if I will, uh, Scotty Shepper, uh, I met his wife, Patsy. And, uh, one thing, Scotty loved the beach that I know of when we would, uh, go and travel. He found himself a beach. We, uh, really got to know each other on a trip down in, uh, uh, New Orleans. And, uh, I always liked the Salt and Pepper jacket that I went out and finally bought me one. So that's my memory of Scotty. Uh, Commissioner Allen, Joe Allen, uh, with kids you love. My memory of him is doing those, uh, difficult times during Christmas, meeting him and even members of his family to help me put smiles on some of these kids' faces. Uh, what was just a, 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 a memory that I will not forget. And, and one of the funniest things i- is that Joe, I'll always remember is you sponsoring sometimes a resolution and sometimes going against your own resolution. It would just be funny sometimes. But, uh, you, you, you would be a loved brother and, uh, and missed. Uh, Commissioner Bibens, I've learned so much from you as an honorable respectable man. I realize that your other office, uh, was up at Krispy Kreme, uh, as well.
Yeah.
Meeting and having the opportunity to meet your family, Ms. Barber, and, and you educated me on trips and, and how to make sure if I, if I'm gonna, uh, uh, have a, a, a drink, to make sure I don't put it on the city's tab. Uh, you, you really, uh, taught me that and I appreciate that. Uh, Slusserger, we go way back to the NAACP. When I was president, you served as my Religious Affairs, uh, well before I think you even, uh, uh, ran for, or city council. People don't realize you and I have been friends for, for many years and I've always appreciated and respected you and just the way you carried yourself as a vote, uh, for and in this community. Uh, you are an honorable man and you'll be solely missed and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Uh, Mayor Ricker, uh, I thank you, sir. Uh, people don't even realize that, uh, you know, we often would, would, would talk about you as, as a person that don't hold grudges. And we saw that, uh, how much heck Rick Hutto would give you. And then you not only appointed him when he left office once, you appointed him twice. And some of us were just so baffled and just couldn't believe it. Uh, but I remember way back when, uh, uh, you appointed me to plan and zonin' and a group of white businessmen led by Ed Walsh opposed me. And you sent them an email and tagged me, and I've always remembered it. It was 10 years ago, December, uh, 10 years ago in December, uh, of, of 2010. And in that email, you said, uh, uh, you will find that Al Tillman is a smart, military and savvy man and he'll make you a good P and Z commissioner. And years later, Ed Walsh rests, uh, may he rest in heaven, went on years later to, uh, help raise me more money than anybody in this community to run for office. And, uh, that's my memory of him. Uh, uh, you coming to my home in Bloomfield, uh, and just being amazed. You called me, said I had a mini recreation center in my yard, my kids. And, uh, uh, no matter where I asked you to come, you would always come and attend events and people just don't know. Even, uh, I know sometimes your staff member scratched their head about our relationship, that sometimes I'd get on here and chastise you and we would come in your office and have a conversation. And you did not hold grudges. You never held grudges. And, uh, it, it has continued to show that, uh, once you make a decision, you move on from it. And so, uh, I appreciate you. Uh, you will have become the longest-serving mayor of all times. And I want the public to know this in this commission that, uh, for six months, I've, uh, tried to name stuff in your honor and I wanted to do it and you literally begged me not to for various reasons. And, uh, I respect that. And you said, uh, I'm here to serve and I don't want that, but, and, and you said that to me. And so I appreciate you. I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate you, uh, giving me the opportunity back in 2010, uh, to serve and thus for helping and start, uh, uh, my political aspirations. I'll always, uh, uh, remember that and I look forward to seeing you and how you, uh, develop throughout the years. And I appreciate you and your wife. And the last thing is, uh, that park over there off Second Street that was named in honor that was, was built with the Ricker money. When people wanted to name it after your mother and father, again, you said no. Uh, you funded it out of the Ricker, uh, Family Fund and folks wanted to name it in y'all's honor and you again said no. So, uh, as a military man, a military man, uh, you are an honorable, uh, military veteran. I appreciate you and I thank you and I thank all of you. And I thank you and I thank all of you that have served and, uh, look forward to seeing what the future holds for all of you all. And I look forward to, uh, joining with these, uh, new commissioners and making more history, uh, for 2021. Thank you so much. Happy holidays to each and everyone.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other points of personal privilege before I take mine?
I wouldn't, Mr. Mayor.
I would.
Uh, Commissioner Allen, let me call on you then, sir.
You know, I come from two different governments, this government and the government before, a long time ago. And you can't mesh them away from one another. I enjoyed the first government in the Bibb County. And I really enjoyed y'all. I mean, the bottom line, we didn't agree with everything, but I didn't agree with everything in the old government. They didn't agree with me. But we always understood each other and we always worked things out. I just want to tell y'all that I appreciate each and every one of y'all. And that if there's anything I can ever do for y'all, just please let me know. I, whatever y'all need, I, I'm, I'm there. And, uh, Mayor, I appreciate you. I really do. I meant, you and I have never agreed on everything either, but the bottom line is, we got it worked out. I mean, you know, we sat down and, you know, let, let cooler heads prevail. And the people of this community look at this board and I think in the, when time comes, when they look back and see that we did work things out, we didn't always agree, as I just said, while ago, but we did finally come to a, a happy medium that things worked out for everybody. And that's what we want to happen here because we all God's children. The way you look at it, we all belong to one Savior. And thank y'all for allowing me to be there with y'all. I enjoyed it. And I hope the best for 2021 through 2024 because it's going to be a hard four years, but I know you've got the right team that's going to be able to take care of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, any, any others before I take my point of personal privilege? Commissioner Bivins?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I just like to thank all those people who've given me the opportunity to, um, to serve um, on this body and, and in the form of county government. Um, and, 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 and one thing I'd like to request though, I, I think most people here don't know it because I think I mentioned to you, Mayor, and you said you weren't aware of it. We have a butterfly habitat at Lake Tobasovki. Um, when we were at the old county, they agreed to let me go set it up, uh, which I did. Joe introduced me to some people from, um, a garden club who came out and helped a lot. As a matter of fact, they've been taking care of it until recently because uh, some time ago, um, I, I, I ended up having a situation where I couldn't go out there and ended up having surgery. Um, but I'd like to, permission from the board to make contact with that garden club and see if they're still there. And I've talked to, um, I've talked to a, um, um, an, an elementary school teachers, four Hs and high school four Hs who said they would be interested in taking it on as a project. So I can just go out and show them what to do and how to do. But if people becomes familiar, you know, I, I went to, um, um, the one over in, gosh, there, there's one in Georgia that's real well-known.
Holloway Garden.
Yeah. But, and I, and I came to the conclusion, you know, we, we couldn't do one like that here. But we have one that works with nature. All the butterflies, the different butterflies in this area. We had a place where the kids could go and see caterpillars from different butterflies because we had the plants out there that, um, that, that the butterflies bring their eggs on. I like to continue to do that, to make contact with this garden club and these four Hs and, and go ahead and do it. And if you ever go out there and look, when I started it, I just had about four patches that I planted flowers in. It worked, but when the late, from the latest from the garden club came, they reorganized the whole thing. And it is a, a well-organized kind of a place. But, um, we just need to go out and get to working it again. And hopefully we can attract people to Tobasovki. Uh, I'll tell you this. When I'd be out there working, there were a lot of people, um, from the, uh, is it the trailer, not trailer parks, but the campus area.
Right, RV.
Yeah. They would come through and, uh, look at the butterfly habitat. And if I was out there sometime, they'd ask me questions. So, um, I think there was a, a genuine interest and I like the opportunity to see to it that it continues to go. Of course, it has a name. Joe mentioned that he thought it should be named for me. Um, I didn't like that idea, but he insisted. So I said, I'll tell you this. I wouldn't be interested in growing anything if it hadn't been for my grandmother. So I asked the board to name it after her. And so that's the name. There's a sign up there that says Mary Newberry Butterfly Habitat. So I, I hope we can retain that. And I'd like to be able to go out there and keep it going.
Very good. Commissioner, Commissioner Bivins, I, I, I'll ask Dr. Moffett if he wouldn't, uh, 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 make a, make an effort to get out there, send somebody out there and give us a status report on the butterfly garden at Lake Tobasovki. Very good. Is, Commissioner Jones, did you have a point of personal privilege?
I'd be willing to go with him if he wants to explain.
I'll get him to call you. I'll get him to call. Commissioner Jones, did you have a point of personal privilege before I take mine?
Make it, make, I'll try to make it brief. It's, it's, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with good and decent people like Larry Schlesinger and Bert Bivins and Joe Allen and, and Joe I've known a long time. He's, he's got a heart as, uh, uh, big as a, a basketball. He's done a lot of good to the community as, as Commissioner Schlesinger. And, and, and Commissioner Bert Bivins, we, that's Bert Bivins the third too. So us, us thirds have a special connection there and the, the only thing he, they should have added, and those were so very well-written, those proclamations. I don't know who wrote them, but they did a terrific job, but the only thing they left out on Commissioner Bert Bivins the third was he, he's, they should have listed him as a troubadour. The old George Strait song, he, he, he wrote in on a song like a young troubadour and he'll write, write out like an old troubadour. So I always remember Bert, one day when just, we were in the commission conference room and he, and, and Sheila Thurman was retiring and, and Bert just stood up and sang a cappella, sang her a song and, and, uh, he, he told me how he used to, uh, campaign singing and that's how he kind of got his start. And, and to you, Mayor, I, I'll always remember you, one of your favorite sayings, reasonable minds can disagree. And, and that's, and that's also true. You said that over and again. I've, I've seen you handle so many slings and arrows and, and deflect blows, but as someone said earlier, I think Commissioner Tillman, you, you've never held a grudge. You've always had a good, a good temperament and handled the job better than most anybody I've seen thus far. You, you and our families have gone to the same church for decades and have all the greatest admiration and respect for you and your family. And I appreciate your service.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Anybody else before I take my point of personal privilege?
It's over.
Ma'am?
It's over.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, with that, uh, let me, let me say, uh, farewell, good friends. Uh, William Shakespeare said, quote, "We know what we are, but we know not what we may be," unquote. So it is that some people are motivated to help shape their community into being a better place. I was so motivated and I believe you, my fellow commissioners and commissioners-elect are similarly motivated. We sure didn't run for the money. No, we have come into this arena to make a positive difference in the community we love. But no matter how well-reasoned, insightful or talented we may be, our success is dependent on others who share our belief or catch a glimpse of the vision we cast. Among these for me have been my family, my law firm and my friends who have supported me, tolerated my absence and kept me grounded during my time as mayor. And my staff and department heads who have managed to do so much to implement our programs and improve our infrastructure. Additionally, our partner institutions and agencies, colleges, universities, hospitals, development authorities, foundations and philanthropic organizations have all achieved enormous success in their own right and thereby contributed so much to the success that we enjoy as a community. And I do believe a positive difference has been made in Macon, Bibb County. We have consolidated the government and we are unifying the people. We have made the case that we succeed only when we work together. Our motto of forward together has been realized. And while there is much more work to be done, it is undeniable that we are moving in the right direction. And so it is with mixed emotions that I bid you farewell and wish for you great success on your efforts to make Macon the hub city of, of the Middle Georgia region. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas.
Happy prosperous new year.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.